But now it's time to figure that out.
Lot more jokes.
Yeah, but it's not unusual. It's a strata like a street road. That's kind of what. Although we have a street road up in that center, that's kind of thirty is around here. There's a stream and it's a road. And that they make the case that roundabout is the way to do that.
We've got the roundabout end over by. By the golf course. How's on that in there forever if they wanted to be here.
That was a good.
Episcopal. Project. Moving.
Was it required?
I think it was. Break it through. I think that was the way that we did the practice studies. Because that's. So.
Yeah.
But I think it works better.
I think it would work better. Instead of a light and a circle, make it two circles or one giant circle.
Something I think they also. Inside. It's not a company like Southern Chester County. You know, I think there's been some funding for that.
So basically it's. They came up with all. As hard as possible. Here about.
If one of the cops was granted, like somebody is you, cop someone. Like that was a major, like that was a weird offset intersection of. Uh, now that the street was free.
Some of the. Prohibits from the cops, basically, prison projects or some township. And I think they, they work together to get funding there. So do that, but if you read it, the prison.
About that.
And first I thought you were all talking about them. Yes.
Did you go to that concert?
I did.
I did. And you. Oh, that was. Well. This is back like seven, seven.
Yeah.
Yes. Pretty much. Very right.
Yes.
And remember being very, very.
Probably true.
We were like right up at the garland. And. I think that's what I pointed out. I look right there.
Now besides change.
I don't. Let's see it.
Somebody. They. Genesis. Why are we?
All right. So they were coming in. There are eight, there are eighteen chairs. They're up pretty quick.
Yeah.
I thought it went. Words and maybe an inverted version.
Yeah. Actual space.
Like, I actually wish I looked. I could get. I'm going to take a moment. Well, that's why my son said it. Then I told him again, why'd you come down?
Very, very tragic.
But like. When by the time we were leaving, it was actually the Siskins. Sunny.
That's where we are. And. It's. They used to say, but we're going. And there's just a white.
Didn't have much snow.
Yeah. The dogs are top of America. It's not. Um, you know, you get. Artists.
I like.
That's it.
So.
Well, we saw a little. So. That was. Anything special. We're not, we're sorry. We saw the university. The. Governor. We'll try. It's. We'll go out. It's not. It's not, it's all warm stuff. I think that's part of.
No, it's not. No. Tiny little.
Yeah.
They would.
It was.
It would tell us how.
It.
The weather can't be much worse. I never go down. They should pay us. Yeah. It's always.
So we then have a.
It's. He came back safe for a day and drove down the road to see the seniors. We were up there.
I was like, uh, no.
What up? What up, Alex?
Realize how.
Runs right from work.
But he came. It's good. On there.
Oh, yeah. Not in my mind.
On life.
Uh, calling to order the May nineteen twenty twenty five, these town council reports, Isaac's meeting. All rise from the question. So the nation's to divide the United States of America into the Republic for which stands domination under God and this whole liberty of justice. Okay, first up is the consent agenda. See, there are a lot of items of this. Uh, this consent agenda. Are there any items that we need to pull out?
We told that to you all.
Yeah, I had one. Prefer the right. No, not the first user. I don't know which one.
I had a J, the grant application.
Yeah, the one. Sound break.
Do you want to talk about it now?
That works.
Sure.
Um, so this is all the wild ones brands. Sorry, I'm still bringing it up. Where did this come from?
I'll tell you.
Sure, this originated out of your EAC committee. They've done a great job of searching for funding for some of the smaller projects that they're looking to take on their outside of the main budget to allocate to their committee. Uh, this is a rolling grants opportunity throughout the state of Pennsylvania, so it can be applied for at any point in the year. There's a no match grant. They're looking for less, just under two thousand dollars. Of, uh, of grant funding for, for this group. And that will go towards a project that they've been vetting for a while that they're calling the Route Thirty Crap Pollinator Pathway. So this is.
Fun time from Wild Ones or going.
Well. Yes, Wild Ones is the grant for innovation. Uh, you have letters of support from Chester County planning from, uh, uh, the. The location, the actual property, because these planters will go on private property, so they include the letters of support from property owners. And it's several parcels along Route Thirty that, uh. Would, uh, have native plants that attract your native species of, uh, butterflies, birds, et cetera. So. Good. So all those things, there's a, uh, like there's a, a strong mass support for it. I think it's in key, you can keep with what you've. Been asking them to do, which is in part looking for some funding when it comes to things outside of their annual budget. So. Right, that's the real short version.
Is there any flexibility with their choices?
Uh, I'm sure they would be happy to talk about that. Uh, so they're the ones, they came up with the list. So if you have suggestions.
I have some ideas.
And I can share with you the, um. The order important that we were, that I think they were basically off of from the one supplier that we're, they were looking at using. So. Some of it may be subject to availability rather than priority. So, uh, but I'm sure they'd be open to discussing any of that. And that's not, uh, the funding is a contingent of that name and the exact rights issue. So.
Yeah, and it's great to see the businesses are all aligned to.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Each location seeks to wildly support itself. And some of them, I think it'll cover particularly pointed out that most of all those things they're looking to do that would tie into it. So they want to make it part of their, uh, lands.
Thanks.
Um, do I have a motion?
Is that it? So.
Yes. I think that's.
So I've got some moved on the consent agenda. A second. Um, any additional board comment? Any public comment? None on favor of projects. Dennis, hi.
I agree.
Eyes have it. Moving on to your board motions, presentations, substitutions. First up is a citation appreciation. For the pauly fire chief.
Now, we, this was delivered, as you were at the meeting, uh, some of us went and presented some kind words on behalf of the township. So it's sort of. Just giving you the chance that to finalize it and sort of informing everyone. Who was able. Uh, myself. And Michael attended, uh, two or three supervisors from, treated for a supervisor from, uh, Willis Town.
Township manager.
Township manager. So it'll be a nice little cohort. Very good. Well, I appreciate it as a technique. Showing our support for the pauly. Parish. All they've done for us.
Um, moving on to item B, twenty twenty five insurance package.
Sure. Uh. Yeah, I, I forgot something in the, in that agenda. I bring it back up. Before you want to wait.
Andy, is it truly up to the chair?
I mean, that's, if you want to bring something up, it's fine. We were voting approved it, but.
Yeah, I know. And it's more of a quick stage of the July fourth event. It's best by the $5,000, I think, or $7,000. And that's on budget as far as we know.
Yes.
We're all set for that.
Yes. Or we will be when the guy like there.
Everything's in process. Okay. Because I know we've had some back and forth on that in the past. Make sure we're budgeting the right amounts of it.
Yes, and we.
I believe six thousand.
Six thousand.
The, the number in their overall, I don't put that in the.
Okay, great. Great event. Thank you. Sorry.
No, it's okay. Uh, it's a good point. It's a good event. It's because of that, some trends. So, uh, I am being the twenty twenty five insurance package. Is that coming?
Sure, I'll just take you through a little bit about the process. Uh, so you have. Those five or six elements of insurance that I identified for, uh, in your. In the memo, the renewal is for the, uh, it's for the package, the worker's confident pollution liability. Uh, that's what we're here tonight to talk about. It's, uh, for all intents and purposes, the same as last year. It's got the same carriers. Uh, same coverages. Pricing is marginally higher. That's a combination of traditional industry increases for most of the things with a sizable decrease in workers' comp. For a net marginal increase. Uh, summary is from page twenty eight. And then this is a, a combination of Steph and Isaac, who is your insurance agent. So it's, uh. It's his opinion and it's our opinion that you should proceed with it. So he can answer any questions you ask, take you through any, any other particular thing that happened to them.
Don, you said there was a sizable decrease in workers' comp insurance?
Yes.
What, there a particular reason for that?
Yeah, so our mod went from, our mod went down to point seven five, and that's a direct model player. And probably four years ago, you were one point four in your mod. So, uh, the injuries have decreased and not repeated. So. Yeah, so that's a sizable, that's a twenty five percent of a hundred and forty thousand dollars. That's a sizable. State community contributes to it. Uh, you. You plowed and, and probably have a person assigned to the back and you're producing slope and fall as the.
Great. What is pollution liability insurance? What does pollution liability insurance?
So it covers for claims damages claimed by other parts. They're interested in property bodily injury, pets, lands.
We've polluted them. So.
You have not had a claim in that area. No.
I'm just trying to understand.
Yes.
Liability. So did we?
Correct. Someone and there's a, a cost associated with that, then that covers maybe enough their debt.
Correct. And how would we do? Do we go out?
There's a sewer party.
Yeah, we could, you could pull it with, uh, any, any aspect of the source system you could, uh, you could, uh. You, there's a lot of things that you, that you could do that could trigger that. It hasn't been triggered in my eight years here.
It's road salt.
Well, I would, you'd have a tough time arguing that that's a. Got to take creative.
Yes.
But it's specifically excluded, so. It's specifically excluded from policy.
Road salt?
Yeah.
Uh, if a claim, uh, on road salt was lodged at the township, that policy would stand.
So, so if the tank, if, if we were moving. Thirty-five tons and it overturned on somebody's yard and blew into their yard, I would imagine that there is sort of a thing that would trigger that kind of.
Or people were sad.
Their.
Techniques.
You don't have to have a sewer authority to have a pollution claim. Certainly, it could be hydraulic fluid or heating oil, anything of that nature.
So if you approve it tonight, we'll execute it. It's aligned to, uh, your current policies. And current pricing.
Yeah. You, you mentioned heating oil. That's, that's not excluded from policy.
Yeah.
That pollution is excluded from general liability policies.
Oh.
Large. That's why we were in a separate pollution liability policy.
Great.
Sure.
Um, I'll make a motion to approve the package, the insurance package. Second. Uh, are there any other board comments?
Just, it says pollution liability policy is not included in the proposal.
Yeah.
So it, it has renewed for five years, flat, same premium. Um, that underwriter will not give me pricing yet. Because it's an August renewal, whereas the package that's in front of you is a seventy-one, six thirty, June thirtieth. So I do not have that pricing yet. But for five years.
Traditionally, we just renewed it. Also, we renewed everything. Got you. I've already renewed it tonight. It's a small, it's a four hundred thousand dollar item before you, and it's a sixteen thousand dollar plus or minus. Right on the pollution.
So you're asking the authority to renew all the policies.
Yes.
Including the pollution.
Yes.
Should not include it in here.
Yes.
That's.
And the reason why we're asked, because it's such a small component of the whole thing with, uh, with inflation or less than inflated inflation reasons. And if something, if something catastrophic occurred, it came back with a hundred fifty thousand dollars renewal, you know, I would let you know that.
Great, uh, any public comment? Uh, on favor of perfect package or motion to perfect package? Say hi.
Hi.
Opposed. To.
Thanks, Isaac.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, you know, I was sitting the fire truck. But persons.
Yeah, so, uh. This was something that you planned for in two thousand twenty-two. Uh, took two years for the invoice to come in. Uh, was planned for two ten, it came in at one eighty-eight. So it was realized last year with a positive variance. There was a component of it that. At least I was unaware of, so I wasn't expecting that this year. So, uh. At the debate, there would be a negative variance this year. It is, it's marginally over the, uh. The total amount that you had planned in twenty-two. Little bit more than marginally over the, it'll be a little bit more than a marginal negative variance.
And it had just been a special, and if that. Best for you approve it.
Right. This doesn't materially impact our budget for this year.
Correct, okay.
Make a motion to approve payment.
I'll second. Any more comment? Any public comment? None on paper, approving, uh, payments. Hi.
I think.
Opposed. Moving on to item. D, the twenty twenty five trash recycling contract award recommendation.
Okay, Joe, will you just give us a little?
Yeah.
Unravel this one.
So the trash and recycle RFP results were reviewed by staff and the township solicitor. Uh, whitetail disposal was the lowest responsible bidder. Uh, as expected, or a little better than expected, Whitetail's low bid is approximately sixteen point five percent higher than our current hauler rate. The year, in year five of the contract, but that was established in twenty twenty. Um, for reference, our current hauler's bid in this bid was thirty-four percent higher than Whitetail. And Republic's bid in, in this was also forty-seven and a half percent higher than their current rate in year five of their contract. So. Feel like, uh. We did pretty well here and just consideration award twenty twenty-five trash and recycling services contract at low bidder Whitetail disposal. For a three-year initial term from October first of twenty-five until September thirtieth of twenty twenty-eight. With two potential mutual extensions through September of twenty thirty.
And, uh, two gentlemen from Whitetail here, introduce yourselves if you don't mind.
Sure. My name's Paul Brady and I'm with Whitetail for the last twelve years. This is Sandro Giacobi. He's been with me twelve.
Yeah.
And quite a while. And we're here to answer any questions. Uh, we're excited about the opportunity. We'll do a very good job for your community.
Thanks for coming and, um, just out of curiosity, we reached out to Republic to see. How they landed on the numbers they get. Like, have we gone back to them at all?
We communicated with them, not in a, uh, why is your number so high, but, uh, in a sort of.
I assume you did in work.
Yeah, well, it's just more of, uh, we appreciate their service and, you know, we know the drill and they know the drill too. They put the price in that they think. Works for them and, you know, they win some and they lose some. So we're, we're talking to them regularly. We're gonna, they're committed to the smooth transition.
They were also fourth lowest out of five, so they weren't in second or anything like that. And also I reached out to three municipalities. Which Whitetail, uh, has a contract for and, um, they were glowing, uh, recommendations. So. Where do you guys have a contract around here?
Uh, neighboring, yeah, neighboring Newtown Township. Uh, we serve as their recycling. In Euclid Township, we do both their trash and their, uh, recycling. Uh, we service thirty-two communities. I think the largest we service is thirteen thousand and smallest is. Five, six.
Four hundred.
Four hundred.
So. Is that in Pennsylvania?
That's in Pennsylvania. Yes, sir.
So. Um. So right now we have automated recycling and the trash is the. The trash can provided by the resident. When we go with you guys, you're going to provide us with a recycling container and a trash container.
Yes, sir.
Correct. Um, Republic is going to take away the recycling containers. The residents are going to be left with a trash container. Do we have a plan to recycle those or get them properly disposed out so they don't end up in landfill?
Yes, but normally what you can do is you can, uh, for those who don't want to use them for another purpose. You know, extra can in a garage or something of that nature. Uh, they can just put a tag on it and then we'll pick it up and take it recyclable wise.
And we'll recycle them. Sure. Okay. Um, and are you based in Vermont? Is that what I'm understanding?
Well, Whitetail is based out of, uh, Perkyomenville. Uh, we have a location in Conchi and a location in Lehigh Valley.
Cause they're based in Pennsylvania.
We're, we're Pennsylvania based. Casella, who owns Whitetail, is based out of Rutland, Vermont. But all of our operations are, are handled here. Out of, of Perkyomen.
Okay, and does Whitetail do the curb side? Composting?
Yard waste collection?
Yes.
Well, not yard waste. I appreciate.
Compost, kitchen composting.
Yeah, not, not at this time.
No.
No, but we've been exploring that.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Let's explore it together.
Well, in fact, uh, Casella out of Rutland, Vermont, they're very environmentally oriented. They have a long history, fifty-year history of being a leader in recycling and. Environmentally correct things.
Okay, fantastic.
I, I currently have Whitetail in Collegeville. Um, all the trash and recycling, it's all common. Uh, it goes into an incineration plant, I think in Chester. Uh, what's the plan for disposal here? I, I know it's in the RFP. I just want to confirm, uh, what the plan is.
Collegeville is, is actually, does go to the facility there in Plymouth Meeting. This is, uh, flow control. So this is good at landfill in Chester.
It's required to go there.
Required, yeah. Manchester, yeah.
Well, per the RFP is a reflection of the county.
Yeah.
So now you, you'll have the responsibility to dispose of the yard waste appropriately. You'll have the yard waste, so. You'll have to find the destination for that and demonstrate that it's, it's suitable.
How yard waste being picked up? In, in the trash can or recycling, separate?
It's by a biodegradable bag and then bundle. And I think we're doing two services in the, uh, fall months. And then one service in, in the, uh, less busy.
It should be the same way you're doing it now.
Okay. And, uh, the large item pickup, that's going to be. By appointment. It's separate.
Yeah.
Which is new for the residents.
Yeah, new, new, but, uh, arguably better in some ways. Like, so, uh, an extension of. A pattern that's emerging and we're just going to sort of.
Yeah, we're totally, they were going to do the same thing.
Yeah.
And you're also going to pick up on Monday only. We are. Do we know what date that is?
Right now we're scheduled Monday.
Okay.
Two best days are Friday and Monday, so we got in on Monday.
So that, those are two of the changes, uh, the, the one-day service and the full automation are two that you have to be comfortable with. Uh, spec was written to it for the full automation. Uh, if you improve it, then we'll go to an inflammation, implementation plan. That'll be sort of a detail we're in a plan of the steps, who has to do what next? And then we have another group working on a communications plan, who has to communicate what to whom and when sort of thing.
Joe, is, um, the price for residents, is it a significant change, any change?
Well, that from year five, Republic's contract was five years. So this current contract in year one is sixteen and a half percent higher than year five of Republic's contract. And that bid went out in twenty twenty. Things were a little different. We expected. At least as much, uh, of an increase with the new contract. So we're pretty comfortable with where we are.
So that, it is the scale of, uh, remember the, uh, this is a fee-based system. So the, the fee just directly correlates to the price that's being charged. So you'd, uh, you'd expect an increase on that scale. We'd have to look at how much is in the account now. Things of that short to determine if it would be sixteen, less than sixteen, something like that.
So is it a fixed price for the first three years? Like, will, will we have to raise it the second and third year or will it be the same price?
There's an increase year over year, uh, but. Yeah, this, the, the percentage was based off of year one compared to year five of the previous contract.
Okay, and then the year. Four and five will also have increases.
Yes, yes. And how we did it with Republic or how you did it is they were inflation-oriented increases and we just passed on inflation-oriented increases each year. So this one won't be inflation-oriented.
But we're just going to cover the cost of. The solid waste. In, in a fee or can we. Kind of subsidize it with taxes and is that a center choice, our choice?
You could. I think the, the practice has always been that, that the fee carries the freight of the operation.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions or? Well, uh, thank you for coming tonight and look forward to working with you and working with the township.
Say.
Um, I'll make a motion, um. For the consideration due toward the trash and recycling services contract to new bidder, Whitetail Disposal. I'll see for a three-year initial term from October first, twenty twenty-five, September thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight. With two potential mutual extensions through September twenty thirty. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other board comment? Any public comment? Yes.
I've had. I live in Upper Marion. We do not have municipal trash collection. Uh, we've had Whitetail for a number of years and they are by far the best collection that we've had. Um, and their communication with us as far as holidays or weather related. Um, and their communication with us as far as holidays or weather related problems or. A truck related issue has always been prompt.
Very good.
Good to hear, thank you, appreciate it, thank you.
Hello. Man, would you mind giving your name uh, for the minute?
Uh, Mary Ann Hooper.
Thank you. Uh, seeing you have. Hands on mine, uh, all in favor of approving the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, just haven't. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, really, thank you, have a nice evening.
Uh, next up is the citizens, citizen communication advisory board liaison appointment.
Yeah, I have a group now is meeting, so it just got maybe you all if you wanna appoint someone.
Yeah, so I, um, they already met this past month, right, so I guess we need a liaison, does anyone? I can do it, but does anyone else have a burning desire to do it, I don't wanna deprive anyone. You wanna do it?
No, 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 no.
Uh, for the record, I look like a hand raised. Um, well, I, I will, um, don't need to make a motion to appoint myself as liaison.
I'll make a motion to appoint Eric.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other board comment?
I'll leave it.
Uh, any public comment? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll put it's aye, aye. Uh, moving on to uh, item F, twenty twenty five road program award, like maybe they, maybe they can take it, take out.
Yeah, so bids were opened on May twelfth for the twenty twenty five road program. Uh, the base bids range from four hundred and thirty one thousand, seven hundred and four dollars and ninety cents to a high of five hundred and thirty nine thousand, seven twenty nine eighty. There were five bids submitted and Glasgow uh, Inc. was a low base bid in that around four hundred and thirty two thousand dollar number, uh. The liquid fuels portion came in approximately one percent lower than the estimate, so we're good there. And just consideration award twenty twenty five road program, the Glasgow Inc. in the base bid amount of four hundred and thirty one thousand, seven hundred and four, seven hundred and four dollars and ninety cents.
Um. And just to be feel comfortable with this company?
Yes.
Any other board comments?
All right, and it's only that this award, um, if you move on with this for the base bid only. There were some extras that, that can change, who is low bidder, and I think at the staff level. They wanted to stick to the funded liquid fuel projects which are in the basement. So the award would be for basement.
Understood. Um. Any other questions? No, very none, uh, all right. Uh, yeah, I'll make a motion to uh, toward the twenty twenty five road program to Glasgow, I think the base. Bid amounts of four hundred and thirty one thousand, seven hundred and four dollars and cents, try the second. Then. Um. And any public comment? See none, all in favor of motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I just haven't. Moving on to. Uh, BFSA resolution. So I'll give you a little overview of it, so uh. This is an extension of a two or three year process, some members need additional capacity. Uh, DEP or the authority and the DEP had a two year back and forth about. The Act five thirty seven planning process, it culminated in the simplest solution, which is for some members to simply. Members that have excess capacity, we can sell it to members that need capacity. So you're a sort of a giant non participant in it, but this is the step that's necessary for. The authority and the other member to implement the process that was so efficient. Uh, is there any potential application for a step where? I don't think so, you're not changing any of your uh, you're not selling capacity or buying capacity. We're just letting others.
Make a motion to adopt a resolution as required by BFSA for the UMA PC report recommendation.
Um, I'll second that question. Any other comment?
So there's no way to change the five thirty seven plan?
No, Tridifer is offering some of its allocation uh, for sales, I understand. So in municipalities where members all have to say, I'm in, I'll help and with this resolution, it's, yeah, thank you.
So that won't affect our flow through Tridifer.
Any other board comment? Any public comment? None, all in favor of approving motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. In on to departmental reports, some of the items that, uh.
Yeah, I wanna bring out a few and then I want to come in to bring few to your attention, so. For me, it was just two of them, uh, earned income tax, you know, you, you expected, uh, you planned for zero in the first quarter. And it gained as expected, uh, you're at twenty two percent year to date, at forty two percent of the year. So it's not surprising, I can't say that it's aligned or not aligned at this point, we've never been told before. So you'll learn a lot by June thirtieth, you should, with your first quarter rate, you should have a decent sense of how you'll finish the year. And then you have another milestone in April or May of next year, because you don't know how many you have to file or shouldn't have. So a little uncertainty and a lot of money, uh, it's no cause for panic, it's just something that we're keeping an eye on. And then it's sort of segueing into the second one, uh, you had a. You know, you're, you're doing a lot, you're capital work, you're doing, had to do it mostly in pay as you go, and there's some back in the work about whether that's a good way to proceed or whether you should. Uh, do it differently, uh, E-TAC is looking at that, you have one very big project that's out there, that's the USHI corridor. I had indicated that it's possible we could get the design done this year and move right into. Right into construction, because you're not gonna, you're not gonna get a, even though it's a nine hundred thousand dollar project, you're not gonna get a. Five hundred thousand dollar invoice in that first month. Uh, just a little, little pause of that, you know, because uh. And you gotta see that revenue come in, you're, you know, you're back in on EIT. Let's, we, so. We're gonna, like, I think it's prudent to tap the brakes on destruction, you have enough money in there for design this year, you'll complete the design. And then sometime in fall, we might reevaluate, we might, the EIT might be so large that you can proceed right into construction. If it's determined that you can't, there's best to wait until probably winter, when you have a better, uh. Yeah, the ca- either the cash in hand or a higher probability or higher certainty of that effect. So a little bit of tap the brakes on that item from all perspective. And then Colleen has a few that I want her to show us.
Uh, so moment is in the process of preparing a grant application for the proposed sidewalks along Newtown from Durwood to Beaumont. They suggested uh, extending the sidewalk to strengthen our application and transfer award. Uh, so they presented to the planning commission, which the planning commission. Uh, recommended moving forward with alternative three, which is to have the sidewalk connect from Beaumont. Uh, to the, go down Beaumont to the front of the, where the township sign is essentially, uh. And possibly have a crosswalk there, so would assist in it, uh, you know, people walking from the park. You know, uh, across the street and vice versa. Uh, and the second is Bowman and TCA attended the planning commission to start the kickoff for the LSA. Uh, Route thirty corridor initiative study, uh, they presented an overall scope. Idea of what the anticipated final plan will look like and an anticipated schedule. So they'll next meet the planning commission and give an update, uh, August fifth. So, and I, I just found out a couple of days ago, maybe, maybe it was. Uh, that they're gonna start the survey work along Route thirty on June, like mid-June, June sixteenish, and should last about two weeks.
Colleen, the only concern that I have with the um, crosswalk that you kind of described it was, and I'm not an expert in the, you know, Beaumont school. My understanding was, there's a problem of people trying to cross the street with traffic and not at a particular crosswalk. Like putting the crosswalk at the township sign over here, is it really gonna get a lot of traffic, like when people walking, are they gonna go out of their way to walk towards the sign? To then go to Beaumont, I'm just, I'm a little bit skeptical that it, that it's actually gonna.
Yeah, so the crosswalk isn't mandatory, right, it was just, uh, it was optional on the design that Beaumont suggested, uh, I know. Personally, I have seen while leaving work or, you know, leaving a little later, uh, kids, I, I don't know if there is some sort of after school. Care across the street, uh, but they have, I've seen people cross, you know, the teachers stand there and kind of. Stop the kids themselves and, and cross them, so it may help with that, I don't, it's not gonna be associated with the school by any means. It's more for, uh, I guess people in this vicinity, if you're walking from Durwood, you wanna come down and, you know.
And that the engineer will design it, they won't allow you to design it if they think it's unsafe, so you're not obligating yourself to it now. You're just changing what's in the application and then if you win it, it's a conventional design and that sort of stuff.
Yeah, no, fair, I, I'm not insinuating it's unsafe, it's just, um, sometimes if it's located out of the way of like a natural crossing path. People will not go out of their way to use the crosswalk, they'll just do the unsafe method of just crossing where there's not a crosswalk, so.
And I think that's somewhat logical, this is the, that might be a more logical process.
The thing to talk about putting that fence up, stop or a gate, stop them doing that, they shouldn't be.
And how that feels.
Well. It, it, it's a bizarre thing, because the parents park their cars on that road. And then on our send or take, I assume they take the kids, uh, it, I mean, it's crazy, like you would put your kids to that much danger that. I don't, I don't understand why I'd go with you then.
Hey, um. Any other comments?
I won't quit, but sure, uh, so we had some historical issues over on Station Avenue and Waterloo Road, stormwater. Uh, on the corner by the train station, uh, whether it's icing, ponding, inlet surcharging. Um, we did just complete a project there, we replaced, well, we inspected it during the design phase. There's a mystery pipe going across the road that was basically abandoned, no one really knows why, it was never, it was compacted with all kinds of debris. That is now completely, uh, out of play, abandoned completely, and we replaced it with a forty foot section of eighteen inch. HDP, we replaced two inlets and one junction box. Um, we have temporary paving there, we have to wait sixty days and then we'll do the final paving. Sold during the previous rainstorm, everything is going where it needs to be and hopefully that's not an issue anytime soon, so.
How did it look last week when we got that, you know, flooding and such, was, was it okay?
Yeah, everything, it looked great, so.
Right, yeah, it was, it was really ponds and like under the, you know, kind of the old pass after the train, um, and then also on Station Avenue there.
Well, it'd be nice to waste some before and after photos, see the difference. Yeah, I don't, I don't know that we did, I don't.
And hopefully with those inlets actually collecting rainwater, coming down station, less will get to the tunnel. And hopefully alleviates that, but at least it won't be ponding and icing in the corner where it's been for three years, so.
It's great.
It's positive.
Is that one construction over by, when you make that, that kind of turn on the station?
Yeah, that, that odd large intersection there, train station, Station Avenue and.
Yeah.
What's that, yes.
Yeah, that access road to the train station from the north, it's right adjacent to that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep. So that's, that's gonna be based.
Uh, yeah, final paving, we have to wait, uh, probably uh, mid-June, I would say.
Looks great.
Thanks.
Hey, um. So, departmental reports, moving on to regular business. Uh, first item is the Devon Center rezoning PC recommendations, oh, did somebody bring this to the?
Yeah, PC brought it to you, so uh, this is organically brewing from PC. And this is aligned to that idea of uh, the PC, if they wanna do something, they have, they need to ask you and it's really, they check in. If you think this is a good idea, then you allow them to proceed, there would be no reason to proceed. If you thought it was a bad idea, so uh. The memo kind of describes it, I think it describes it pretty well, I would say it's an attempt to. Uh, you went through this in the past, zoning was one of the items, you, you. I think you, you all agreed that you wanted the village like zoning, you never agreed on the specific zoning. So this is an attempt at to compromise if uh. To, to make it work, I think you gotta start with the village business zoning, because you, that's already time tested. Uh, you've made your peace with that, uh, so it makes it doable. The two things that I think are most likely to cause it to derail. That come up from time to time at the planning commission are the density and the building height. You all have, this board in particular has spoken authoritatively about density. And so uh, I doubt you wanna entertain a discussion about changing the density, if you do, let us know. But uh, if, if, if you decide you want to allow this to proceed. My gut tells me it's prudent for you to state your opinions regarding, you know, density and height in particular, if those are. Things that you don't want to expand, then you want to communicate that to the PC, you don't want them exploring a version of this that has. Densities that you presumably won't approve of. So you kind of know what I know at this point, it grew organically from the PC and it's the PC asking you if uh. If they can do this, if you say yes, they'll probably noodle on things this year, but ultimately it becomes a budget item for twenty twenty six.
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, I, I don't really know that I have an appetite to revisit zoning. Also, I'm not, they seem to reference the comprehensive plan as being a basis for this, but I don't really see. Rezoning this area as being part of the comprehensive plan. So I, yeah, I'm hesitant to say they should do anything with regards to this, but I'm open to anyone else's ideas or thoughts on it.
The only reason why I, I feel opposite is um, talking about uh, rezoning. Uh, the Devon Horse Show for a Christmas fair, I really liked what they did, um, and I think there was an opportunity for more events. That even the immediate neighbors will uh, find acceptable and accommodating, not too much, um, you know, buster on that, so. I, if we have to rezone it and look for that to happen, for it to be kind of above board, um, I'd be in favor of that, but. You know.
I don't know that that's what they're proposing now, I, I think what, what they're.
Yeah, but I don't think.
I think it referenced that, but they're, they're looking at more comprehensive. Yeah, so, I would say they're looking at a less, so they're, what they're looking, you have, you have uh, PBO zoning. So your comp plan says that you, you want village like zoning endeavor, you want village like activity in Devon. And you have two. Two, two, two zoning codes there that apply, one is PBO, which expressly forbids village like zoning. And the other is the suburban residential zoning. So the comp plan calls for Devon Center to be a village like area. But your zoning expressly forbids you, it forbids someone, if someone came in and said, I wanna build village like development. They would be expressly forbidding from doing that, so all this is doing is aligning the zoning to the comp plan, it's not. Becoming a developer, it's not uh, figuring out uh, events to bring in. It's not building anything, it's not uh, facilitating, uh, trading anything to be built. It's just changing the zoning so that if someone wants to build something that is village like, they would be allowed to build, to build it.
Yeah, and I'm not implying that this would create a new Christmas fair, but. The zoning uh, is one of the impediments to something like that happening, I know they're very restrictive, it has to be. Horse related equestrian use, you know, type of stuff, um, I, I, I think we can do better, so. I'd be in favor of revisiting this, um, but certainly.
Anyone else that I thoughts or?
My gut reaction is I don't wanna do it because it was, it was so negative last time, I don't know that we would necessarily fix it or not.
And, and that was the sense I got from the PC when they brought it up on their, uh, at the road meeting, which is that people came out of the woodworks and complained about. Having to revisit the issue of zoning and rezoning and people were getting up in arms about it already without anything to leave.
See, the bulk of the negative reaction was people were afraid that if we, if it was rezone commercial, that they were gonna put a hotel there, the apartment garage, and then. Either that was gonna be a pain or it was then gonna be sold and then redeveloped into a multifamily, you know, apartment building or something like that, so.
Well, it's always apartment over there, right, it's no longer there.
Uh, it seems to be my memory collection.
It was a apartment over there.
And, but PB still allows apartments, so, so if, if one is concerned about apartments, there is. Less capability to build apartments in BP than there is in PBO.
I think there's another issue that we have to think about and that's. Set the, right, that they've threatened to close down the archive or wherever they're calling it these days. Um, if they actually go through with that, and they're saying they're gonna do it this summer, that would change what this would be in some way, shape or form. Um, if they actually go through with that, and they're saying they're going to do it this summer, that would change what this would be in some way, shape or form.
It's a good point, I, I think the other thing too is that our comprehensive plan is. We're almost at the end of the ten-year period in which you're supposed to do it on a, uh, for the township. So I mean, it might make more sense to just hold off generally until we get, start, you know, working on the next comprehensive plan and make sure that the vision's aligned with. The future vision for East Town, which.
And, and that's why we bring it to you, so that it doesn't, uh. Create a life of its own and make everyone angry when you don't want it to proceed, or you want it to proceed later.
And that, that is eight minutes per acre right now.
Yeah, it's. Some, something on that scale in, in village, not in PBO. No, in PBO, it would just be limited by whatever you could put in there with all the other things.
No, no, there was a, we never took away the numerical limit in PBO.
Uh, does PBO have a numerical limit, Colin?
I believe it is, uh, around like twelve or sixteen, yeah.
Oh, yeah, VT was twelve, and then VB is sixteen, and PBO is sixteen.
So, I will check that, I, I thought the change, the limitations that you put were on VB and DT. And PB is limited by conventional things that limit development.
That was one of the recommendations out of the Devon Center Task Force.
Well, but I, you know, bringing it back to the comprehensive plan, in fact, we'll probably be revisiting it soon as a township. Um, it might make more sense to wait till then to give directions to the PC, just because. You'll have more community input as to what the vision is, and it's more likely you'll get people to come out and weigh in on it specifically, community members, so you'll wind up with. A situation where you have a lot of upset homeowners in the area, who feel like, you know, something is being shoved down their throats. So, my thought is hold off on it, you know, I hope I have suggestions, but.
Seems like two, you feel that way, Alex, you're not terribly moved one way or another.
I'm, I'm in favor of revisiting it.
I think we need to hear from, need to know what the consensus of the board is, it would, it would be a mistake to allow the PC to proceed. If there wasn't support by the board or from the board at this point. Correct, I mean, that would like, there's no reason to argue.
Well, it sounds like it's two-one right now, so Susan and Sean.
I, I think sitting on the planning commission, I can understand that their points and, and I'm not, I don't have the historical, um. Education, but I, I just thought that they were trying to make a, it, Devon more of a community place instead of just a drive-through. You know, car dealership sort of town, what are the risks? Change, like, what, what, what could be done that?
Well, I think the idea is that, uh, uh, I'm not looking at it in terms of risk, I'm turning, I'm looking at it in terms of what. You know, the ultimate vision is for the area, right now, we don't have a, like, I think the company has a plan, it's fair to say that it's dated at this point. I think that if we waste time or money into this project now, before we. Um, revisit and revise our comprehensive plan, we risk waste, just dumping money into a project that never happens. Because it's just going to be revised in accordance with what we do in the next comprehensive plan anyway, so rather than avoid that expense and waste.
To me, it seems to make sense.
The existing comprehensive plan was coming in twenty eighteen, right, so.
And we, by the way, we don't have to wait till twenty twenty.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, is if we, if we, instead of doing this plan on an effort for the next. You know, we roughly have two years, because we have, we have to plan for the twenty-six and twenty-seven, get the new comprehensive plan done by twenty-eight. That would be a more useful, use of time, I think.
Do you think the, uh, new plan will revise your opinion, do people feel differently about Devon than they did in eighteen?
Well, I think, well, well, I think what will have happened, Don, is that. Correct me if I'm wrong, but the comprehensive plan process is a open hall of meetings about what should be in that comprehensive plan. And so when you incorporate the community into that process, you get an idea of what the community wants. And that's the.
It'll be different than the eighteen version, because I think that's what happened in eighteen, you got a statement about what you want for Devon. I thought that part was pretty clear, I didn't think you needed to revisit that, I thought it was the. The components of it haven't been implemented, and this being one of the components, but if this, if you think the, the. You think the vision of Devon will change from the two, two thousand eighteen comp plan. Then it would be silly to align the zoning to the vision of the two thousand eighteen comp plan. If the vision of Devon is, you think unchanged from eighteen. And it's a discretionary choice for you to align the zoning to that vision.
Yeah, I, I, well, I see it as potentially being different, so I mean, I don't see the benefit of. Stating to the two thousand eighteen plan, but at least that's mine.
The statement here says the township needs to identify an overriding vision for the area that provides for mixed uses, so was that vision ever created?
No, that's what DCD decided to unveil, but isn't.
Well, we need that before we do anything else, we need that vision.
That's why I, I agree with what they're saying, that it was in the twenty eighteen comp plan, and was never essentially done when the DCD died. We never pursued it afterwards, the reason, Sean, to answer your question, my recollection was the DCD died, and I was kind of getting on the board at the time. When that whole thing was kind of coming to a close, so I don't have all the expertise in it, but my recollection was. Everyone agreed that something needed to be done in downtown Devon to kind of revitalize, there's blighted properties and. Different uses, it's probably a better use for some of the, uh, properties in that area, um, the concern was. That they were going to sell or show if it was rezoned commercial, be sold to a developer and then put giant apartments in there. That was the main concern for, for people, so they came out in droves against that. If we can put a more tight scope around this activity here for the PC. Where we don't want that to happen, expressly don't want that portion, but attempt to kind of rezone the rest of it so that it. Spurs more development like we're looking for, I think, I think we could throw the needle for that, so that's why I'm there.
And, and that's the, that's the logic of when I expressed what could throw it off, the rail would be the density and the height.
But I'm, I'm confused, because this says zoning, right, zoning is not, is a very tactical thing.
It's zone potential, that's the big problem.
Right, but it's not a vision thing, a vision thing, we, we want it to be X, Y, and Z.
Right.
This is a zoning thing, this is like we're going to say twenty-two feet of this.
You have to zone things to match what your vision for the area is.
So you don't, so I, I guess then that, that's key, that's the very key distinction, you don't feel like the two thousand eight comp plan. And the process that you went through established that vision.
It says it doesn't, it says right here.
Well, I thought, I think it established it, I thought that, uh, what came out was you all wanted the village-like. Uh, the village-like attributes in Devon, what you, what fell apart was how to get to it. Along the, for some, the village meant more apartments and higher, uh, taller buildings, for some it meant the opposite of that. So if, uh, if you don't feel the, the vision is adequately defined, it would be silly to match. To try to match the zoning to something that you feel is not adequately defined. If you feel it's defined, then you can match the zoning to that definition.
And to add on to that, um, the risk of not moving on this, and also not doing something to define. A, a vision for Devon Center, if you don't think that's adequately there to do something like a master plan now. Is that we will continue to see some of the properties be redeveloped, which is better than them being bloated, but redeveloped in a manner where we're getting van repair. Stores on a very accessible, very visible, very walkable storefront, high-density area in Route Third. That I don't think is the highest and best use of that, of that area or that property. So we end up with this eclectic, not really cohesive type of development that has no main goal. Because we don't move on this sort of stuff and we don't define it.
Right. Do you want to just noodle on it too, like, it doesn't, it isn't like this is coming up and you got to decide now, this can, this can, you can take a month.
My favorite, I, I, you know, because I, I think to your point, like. The other issue with this particular quarter is that, like, it turns into terrific and very quickly. And we don't have any control over what terrific does with their section, and terrific, in my experience, tends to be hands-off with dirty, like, development. And so that's another issue, I think, to consider, but.
But, but the planning commission could talk to their planning commission, but I mean, that could be after, to see if there's any coordination.
One thing that might be helpful, I'm, I'm pretty sure that there are detailed minutes from one or two of those. Devon Center discussion meetings, there were some really long ones during COVID, um. And there is, and I may have done a summary, which I can provide to the board, that just kind of lays out. Where all of the various stakeholders were coming from, and. So you can see what happened last time, just as a, as a refresher.
I think that'd be really helpful to look at, and, because I, you know, I, I already know what's going to happen, it's like all the residents are going to be on one side. There's going to be people who own the property, and potential developers on the other side, and that, that is, I assume, what the schism was, I, I don't really recall much, but. I assume that's what the schism was, because developers are going to say, oh, I need that identity to make it work well, so I can make money. Which I get, like, I'm not poo-pooing that, I get, you know, that's the business they're in.
My recognition is that.
That, that's what it's going to turn into, and so, you know, that's what I'm trying to avoid by just saying, yeah, go take a look at it, PC, and redo zoning. Because that's just going to open up a Pandora's box, if we don't give them a very narrow scope in terms of what the vision is for the, for the township. And what, you know, policies we want to make sure that they're following when they revisit that zoning. Or to the extent that we're not telling them what that zoning should be.
Well, I think they should change this to Devon Center's vision, not his, within our own, no zoning, I, I think they're jumping too far into.
Yeah, I agree.
Right, I agree, um. There were, there were two things, there was, there was Senate Task Force, and there was the DCEPs. Something, I forget what it was, that, that's where the, the sidewalks came from, the DCEP did a study of it. Uh, for, um, transit-oriented development in that area, and that's where the, um, recommendation for the sidewalks came from. So.
That was the one thing everybody seemed to.
Yeah.
Get behind the.
Right.
And we slowly developed, and so it's not like we haven't kind of set on our hands here.
The bigger picture than I remember on transit-oriented development is what that means. And it kind of got back to that density, which I think you, you resolved your outer limits already. Uh, but there was some discussion on, right now, you can have, for instance, um, apartments in a mixed-use concept. There was some discussion whether the walkable townhouses were viable, and I think. There were a lot of diverse views on that, the auto dealers came in and said. That they have the highest, uh, ratables, they get the most revenue on real estate, and they were concerned about. Becoming non-conforming uses that were maybe going to get pushed out, and then as you came down Waterloo. And maybe Devon Boulevard as well, some of the, you know, the, the perpendiculars to thirty. There were stakeholders, property owners, who had very different feelings. On, on sometimes on the same street or at the same intersections as to. When really pure residential begins versus some kind of mixed use, so those were kind of the, the big baskets that ended up without action. Uh, last time.
And towards the end, we, there was an attempt to make it as tiny as possible, exclusive, dogged, auto dealers and everything.
Yes.
It actually became nothing.
Yeah, attempt to kind of find consensus, it got a whole lot closer to the Waterloo register intersection, so, you know.
Does not sound like there is a, an opinion to proceed, or, or a sort of unified.
Because I think we're prepared to direct the PC to do anything, no matter.
I, I mean, the only thing I hear, like, I don't know what this vision for village is, I, I, I get, I, I do understand what Alex is saying. Um, I just, like, I don't, I don't know, based on what you said, what, what is it the people want? Like, what is the village, like, what is it? Um, and as Michael said, with zoning, like, what are we, that's, that's a little more concrete. And that can, that can, that can affect certain things, so. Um, I'm, I'm good with thinking about it, and I'd like to see those minutes, I wasn't on the board at the time. Um, I'd like to look at that a little more, uh, I mean, I heard about it when I was running, people telling me about what they were worried about. Um, but I do think something needs to, uh, definitely, we need, we need something, but what is that vision? I don't know, I mean, I have a vision in my head of what it could be really meaning, but I don't know what people want, this community. I think a little more thinking would be good, I don't think we have to jump into this so quickly, I don't know, Susan, do you have an opinion?
Actually, no, I just don't have enough, um, knowledge to, to formulate. But I, I, I think that their arguments are compelling them at the meetings, to make it more of a. Less than a, a drive-through, whiz-through Devon, to more of a place where people are. Where there's more pedestrians, and I can see that there's issues with car dealerships. You know, they don't want to disappear, they, they're high revenue, I, you know, I haven't thought about all those issues, so. My head's sort of spinning at this point, I don't know, maybe Calum has any sort of ideas of what. What their, what the, the commission is really sort of, what their strategy is.
Uh, what their strategy is, or what their, their, their vision?
What their vision is.
Well, and. Don explained it very well, uh, I think what they want is, uh, like a village-like downtown feel. Um, but I don't think they have one hundred percent narrowed it down what they want, they just, they know the concepts. Um, so I, I think it's, it's going to take a little while and, and a couple more discussions to really narrow it down.
Keep in mind that, uh, no one, at no point is anyone proposing that someone builds you a Devon village. That, uh, at this point, all this, all this is about is the zoning, and you.
So I'd rather see some pictures of that, like, let's pay the money to get somebody to draw pictures of what a Devon village would look like. Given the constraints of the space.
Aren't those just the pictures from VB? If you went through this in VB.
Devon has different constraints than the VB. Physical constraints, and also in this door show, and how does that fit into it? So I would like to see some pictures of what this looks like, some visuals of what this looks like. Now, I think the vision, and then we can say, okay, in order to accomplish that, we need this zoning, but the zoning is putting the car before the horse.
Well, maybe, well, I think in terms of just next steps, maybe we could circulate some of that information, so everyone can kind of get up to speed. Um, and then maybe we'll revisit it next month and, and discuss it then in terms of how, how we think best to proceed. Um. And, you know, tell the PC to sit on it, I guess.
Yeah, just table it in that line until you.
But like, uh, let's start thinking about the, the comprehensive plan, because, because if we don't start now. Twenty twenty-eight will be here, and we won't have a good comprehensive plan.
Right, I agree, okay. All right, uh, moving on, the next item up is the responsible contract ordinance. Um, I think this was, uh. Packet material on this, I think the last we left it, as I recall, and I missed last month, so I was in.
Actually, you know, my understanding of it, uh, so you, you discussed it a little bit, informally among yourselves, there was a difference in threshold. Uh, Alex was advocating for a much higher threshold, because he had concerns that, uh. Some of our existing contractors would be unable to perform, and it was, uh. So it would, two possible effects, it would, uh, eliminate some of our contractors, we probably have. Five contractors that might not be able to do the services that we do. And then if they did, it could raise the price of, uh, of the cost of doing that, Alex, did I capture that correctly?
That's correct.
And then, uh, others were aligned to a much lower threshold. Uh, and then it was sort of recognized that it would be best for Eric to be here to review that with us, so.
Now you know what we feel very special.
It's a, it's a somewhat limited universe of issues, so I think my recollection is the first time you discussed it. People were comfortable with the general framework of the model ordinance that is a pretty limited universe, it, it. It deals with construction, demolition, alteration, renovation, modernization. Service or maintenance of building structures or facilities, that's your stuff. So it, it's usually going to apply to, you're renovating the public works building, you're doing something here. Um, so I don't think there was a lot of discussion on that, and then on the, on the dollar figure, you really have. You can look at two local models, um, West Ocean, I believe dealt with sort of the base. Threshold, which is in the mid-twenty thousand dollar range, in other words, if it's required to bid. You're going to have to have the responsible contractors who have that, um, that training program and all those things that. That go with the definitions, and then there's the Westchester Borough Model, and I think maybe Laura Marion has done it. Similarly, where you're looking at major public works, like the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar range, that could be higher or lower. Um, but whether you want it up there, a major project, or you want it to essentially be. Everything that involves those kind of projects that the township itself bids on.
Yeah, and I, to your point, Andy, I thought the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar threshold made the most sense for us, at the very least, because. You don't want to burden every small contract with this, um, it seems to be high enough such that. It's not going to materially impact a lot of the smaller jobs that are done, to. To Alex's issue, you know, you never wanna like increase costs inadvertently by. Um, supporting businesses that provide apprenticeship programs. Um, to me, that seemed to make the most sense, and then to just track the model. Uh, ordinance language and what, and what we adopt, and that, I'm in favor of that, and. But I'm happy to hear other thoughts or.
I'll, I'll look at the number as low as possible, but I'm not gonna cut off my state, base to play my base, so. You know, whatever number we come up with.
We could always re-adjust it later, too, that, you know, isn't impactful.
One question, so Andy, that would affect all the, would affect the pipe contract, the paving contract? Any, any kind of public works repair?
Yes.
Sewer, sewer contract?
And. If it was your contract.
Yeah.
Versus the authority's contract. Um, you know, you might wanna talk to the authority about doing something at the same time. But right now, the model ordinance talks about building structures or facilities, I mean, you could. You could define what you want that to be.
Yeah.
You know, it could be more. Buildings or. You know, facilities, projects, but not including X, Y, Z. Or you could think that the dollar figure takes care of that.
So, so there's some of the contracts that you have that would be affected by it. Uh, liquid fuels is four hundred thousand dollars tonight, and so, you know, that would probably, the. The types of contractors that typically get that work would probably get priced out and put you into another group. Uh, we got, like, we think one of the, we, we think that some of them that, that bid would be eligible, but, uh. The, the ones that are doing that are likely the ones that are below that threshold, you have, um. You have sewer repair contract is not likely that you would exceed two fifty in the sewer repair. So even if it was an issue for the EMA, it probably wouldn't, uh, affect them. Uh, your paving repair, you don't likely get to two fifty, uh, but you're close to it, you're, you're somewhere around. Two hundred thousand for that in a given year. Uh, your snow removal has been north of two fifty, you'd have a difficult time using the current, the current contractors. Would not likely, uh, satisfy that criteria, so. At two fifty, you're pretty close, probably the only one that would come out for sure would be, uh, liquid fuels.
And another one that, that comes to mind is we had a, we had a great big trouble attracting plumbing contractors. To replace the Berlin Force Main, uh, sewer replacement, when we did that two years ago or so. Um, I remember we had to put it on the street twice, we got no response either time, and the third time, I think you guys had to go around asking for. Contractors to provide a quote, um, and I doubt they have the, the proper apprenticeship program for, for this sort of thing, so. It, it, I'm, I'm concerned the threshold's too low, um, you'll end up with a lot of these contractors, just. This work just won't even get done, and we have certain capital expenditure programs, so that, that's my concern with it.
Well, isn't, isn't this for skilled craft personnel, is paving roads skilled craft personnel?
Yeah.
And that's where we might, we might be able to, um, we might be able to define beyond the model. Ordinance to talk about. You know, what that, what that skill is, so some of that is about. Training programs for safety, but you're right, some of it is promoting skills that you need in the. Workforce team going forward.
Does this apply to subcontractors, with subcontractors within the group?
Yes, at least I think under the model ordinance, it would apply. That, that the contractors would, in, in other words, you couldn't evade the requirements by. Finding people to sub it out and say it doesn't apply to them.
Yeah, I mean, the model ordinance preferences, licenses, registrations, certificates and credentials, do you need licenses, registrations, certificates or credentials for paving? Cause that, that was the big one that I mentioned.
Thank you, I, yeah, it was, so I, I was reading that under that, that was applicable. If it's, that's the most threatening one, if it's your intention to not include that, then Andy, you remind me, I understand you could just. Expressly not include it and take all the uncertainty out of it.
Yeah, we could figure out how to define it more narrowly.
That, that's the most, uh, that's the one that seems to be the most vulnerable, given the threshold that you were there for.
Yeah, I, the purpose of this ordinance is to protect skilled labor that requires apprenticeship programs to develop. Employees, it's not to protect, you know, uh, work that doesn't lend itself to apprenticeships. Stop, as you like plumbing and electrician work, like, I assume that was the focus of the statute.
Those are where I think some of the, some of the larger unions are encouraging that because they're. Their members and the big contractors have the ability to do those apprenticeships, paving on a less familiar way.
Yeah, I, I don't think this applies to paving, I mean, I'm, you know, I'm.
And you can define it that way, and be clear, too.
And we do a product to make the same sort of analysis on the solid waste, the collection of the solid waste.
Well, but that's not, that's, that's not the building improvement of a structure or facility, that's more of a service contract. Um, so I don't think that would apply to it.
I think a million dollars makes more sense for a threshold, because that becomes kind of more closer to a number where it's like you're building a. A facility, a building or something like that, um, you need skilled trades. And they have the resources that they can provide these programs, make sure that you're, you know, helping out in, in something that you think is important. Without necessarily impacting some of the smaller contractors that would be priced out of something like this.
All right, well, um, I'm in favor of the two fifty, I think, you know, moving to seven figures, I think it's beyond projects that we. Really handle anymore, so effectively neuter this, the purpose of the ordinance, so. I'd be in favor of two fifty, it's the model language, and then retooling is the extent we think we need to say. You know, make sure we're including the right projects and excluding projects that aren't expected to be included in the apprenticeship style. Uh, businesses that this is seeking to cover.
Um, and the board doesn't have to vote on all the final pieces, but if, if you agree with the chair. I'll work with staff and we can, we can adjust the numbers and try to adjust the definition, so it gets at what you're worried about. The number is easy enough to change the definitional stuff. That we wanna make sure we get that nuance right, that you're all comfortable what's in, what's out. And then you can always, when that's in front of you, you can fine tune that number when we're ready to. If you generally wanna move forward, it sounds like.
Yeah.
I'm hearing anybody say, no, let's not move forward at all.
Sounds like, and it sounds like we have consensus on number, although Sean and Susan.
I think I'd like to see a little higher, but I think that maybe that could come, maybe when we look at it all, when it's complete. We can decide whether it needs to be two fifty or maybe slightly higher, I don't know, a million seems like too high, two fifty seems like a little below.
We can do two fifty as a placeholder, if you want, and, um.
Why don't we do that, and then we could tweak the language, so we can deal with the projects that someone had concerns with, although I. Think just reading it right now, it seems like it excludes those sorts of jobs, but we can also tweak it to fit that.
I think I was also feeling the same way without this comment, well, uh, the two fifty, I mean, I. I, I would be willing to go a little higher, I don't know if I'd go as high as he wants it, but, um, I share some of the concerns, I don't wanna. Price out people, so I'd maybe go through the language first and then talk about the number second.
And presumably you want this to apply to the EMA also, you're, you know, I would view that as a. You have that agreement where you operate the system, so I think that. Is it, is, is it your intent, you know, we explore that with the EMA's attorney, but is it your intent that this would apply to the EMA also?
How did, how did, do you know how Westchester does it, Andy?
Um, I think Westchester has it globally, and I think in, in West Ocean, I believe their sewer authority adopted. A mirror image, uh, by resolution. Um, but we think in West Ocean, maybe that, maybe that sewer authority does more of its own procurement. But we can, but as Don said, too, if you're not, if you're not really. Interested in. Let's say pipes and pumps, roads, pipes and pumps versus. Buildings where, you know, you might wanna include big landscape projects, you know, it. Uh, let's say you redid the whole park here, that, that could be a big ticket item, I don't know if that's the kind of thing. You wanna include, or if you're just talking about buildings. Um, that's pretty easy.
Yeah, and I think that's kind of what the statute is geared toward, that like, we're not trying to capture. Particular projects we're currently working on, it's more the idea of future projects that may impact buildings, just. As far as I read this, the model ordinance.
So in that case, I mean, we could, we could sort of narrow it to talk about. Construction, expansion. You know, reconstruction, redevelopment of township buildings.
Or sidewalks.
And related, you know, you could talk about infrastructure related to a building project, so that. Let's say you were, you were rebuilding something, like you said, then it would include. The sidewalks, the landscaping, all that, at least as like a prime contract.
But each new shape card or contract will probably be bigger than.
Yeah, you, you, I, I guess that's it, like, when you say building, I assumed you meant building, not a building. So, like, the sidewalk is, I assumed you want. That, something like that included, because that's a nine hundred thousand dollar building project.
I would. Yeah, I mean, that. But, I mean, but, well, we already contracted, I wouldn't be subject to this, this would be.
Correct, you have contracted that one out, so, uh, that was, that would be probably the next one coming down that would be affected by.
I guess paving, pipes and pumps, you know, three Ps, I'm thinking of this, is that? Do, do you envision that as a separate, separate from this requirement? Or do you want that all in?
You have a decent amount of paving, a decent amount of pumps, and what was the third P? Pipes, and pipes. You have a decent amount of that, so, uh, that will be affected by your decision.
I don't wanna see this priced out ourselves, where it's gonna be more sense.
Do those companies even have those, the advantage?
Well, yeah, I mean, I, where are the, like, the companies that are doing a nine hundred thousand dollar side project to those five employee companies?
Uh, I, I, I think so the larger you get, the more inclined you're gonna be, you're gonna get that, uh. They have these sort of things, this is one data point, uh, and, uh, but we had in the. For the paving that you approved a moment ago, we had three, three bidders. Six thousand dollars separated them on a four hundred thousand dollar project, the next company was twenty-five percent more. They're a company that you would recognize to be a larger company and would probably have an easier time. Facilitating something like this, don't know that for sure, that's just sort of my gut.
Like, no, no, like, you're, they all get it out, in a apprenticeship program, but, you know, right, you don't know.
Well, I wouldn't say I have no idea, I, uh, very good, I won't speculate then, I just, I would say, uh, I won't speculate then. But, uh, that's what you gotta figure out, we're under the, I'm under the impression that, uh, that these companies that are. Doing some of this work for you would have a tougher time achieving that than some of these other companies. And so it's just, there's a possibility you could price out some of these smaller companies. But I can find that out for sure, that's an easy, that's, we're nothing more than a phone call away from, uh, asking those three companies.
I've worked with all of the companies that fit on the road program, and the three lowest. Um, two of them, I know for sure do not have an apprentice program. And they would, you, they wouldn't be able to bid on, uh, the, the road program.
Well, I mean, part of the concern, but especially with the response to that, contract ordinance, making sure that they're getting good contractors, so. It's not just that they have this program, the idea is that they have trained workers that are doing the work, so that what we are paying for is quality work, so. I mean, that's my thought process in this as well, is that it's not to get the best deal, it's to get the best deal with the best work.
Right.
And that's what I see as.
You also have to be careful about all else remains the same, right, if we do this, if other townships do this, the companies will adapt, adapt to it.
So do you, you, uh, it sounds like you want the, for now, the two fifty as a placeholder, at least open to, uh, that it could be adjusted. At a subsequent meeting, do you want what Andy called the three Ps included?
So, why don't we just track the language in the model ordinance, and then we can make that decision as it.
Right, okay, so what we'll have to do on the staff side is interpret that language, I, I'm assuming that that.
It's fairly comprehensive and is adopted by multiple.
Right, so I mean, I, I interpreted that to mean it's included, so we'd have to make sure that that's the case.
Right.
Uh, so it sounds like you wanted to come back, you wanted to have the two fifty placeholder. And you wanted to track the language in the draft that was provided.
Yeah, and then we can, I guess, retool it before it actually goes to the PC for, like, it has to go.
Uh, this one, I think, is, it would likely be a standalone, non-zoning, so I think it's gonna be in your legislation.
Right, well, we can retool it on, on draft, I guess, once we get that together, and then.
And what we could do, um, I'd work with staff, we could sort of try to. Get some informal information from our neighboring municipalities that have done it. And what has been working best or not working.
Yeah. That'd be great. Yeah, um. Need some vote on this, or is this?
I don't think so, I think you're just directly have a number. Staff in our office to get you something to leave that public record.
Right. All right, um, moving on to us, does everyone else have anything they wanna add, or? Right, I'm moving on to Roughwood's seed collection, Michael, I think, you wanna add this, what's, uh? You wanna take it away, or you want someone else to?
No, I, I don't know if anybody else knows anything about it.
I, I know a little bit, but not a lot.
Right, I didn't even know Roughwood existed, I was invited by the, um, Star Commission to go visit, visited it. And Roughwood is a, a house, and there's a bunch of history, the report talks a little bit about that. Um, but the thing stood out to me was, there's a, also a seed collection there, which again, I knew nothing about, apparently. People know such things, it's a, it's like one of the top seed collections in the world. Um, it's a little different than everybody, I, I, the people I talked to about it always played it to the seed storage up in. In Norway or something, that's a different thing, that's a long-term storage facility. This is, they continually regenerate the seed collection, so it's, um, it's a more living, for lack of a better word, living thing. Um, unfortunately, the house has been sold, um, the collection has nowhere to live at this point, as far as I know. Um, it would be a shame, I think, it's been in East Town for many, many years, it'd be a shame that it had to leave East Town. We could say that, right, now there's a board of the Roughwood Collection. Who they'll ultimately make the decision, all we can do is offer up whatever facilities we have that could work. So.
Do I have facilities?
Well, that's the thing, I mean, I, I would ask us to ask our EAC and, uh, Star Commission to look into, work with the board from Roughwood to see. Um, if there aren't facilities we have that could work for this, you know, because, not only do they, they need space. They need space for the seeds, obviously to store them, they need office space, they need, um, space to grow the gardens, right? Cause they continually regrow the, the seeds, um. And it could be that we just, we can work through to get it onto a private, there's like a, I don't know, thirty acre former. That is not actively being farmed, maybe that would be a place to store it. And then that would still be within East Town, so it's just a matter of the board supporting that we, you know, doing something like that. So I think that's like the, the back of an envelope.
Yeah, I, I thank you for that, and, um, you know, it would be nice to keep something like that in East Town if we have capacity and. Sounds like we have a couple members of the public who are, uh, comments, so, um.
Do they have any funds to, to purchase property?
No, it's a nonprofit organization, they do sell seeds to maintain, so for their operations, it's not for profit, right? But they, they, so they do have some funding, but I don't know if they have money to.
No, in downland.
No.
Seems like it'd be quite a. Thing to take on.
Do we know?
I think somebody's gonna have to donate land, is what it's gonna.
Do we know the square footage and the acreage roughly?
They, I don't know.
I'm from Roughwood, so I can help you answer some of these questions, um. As far as land actually growing, probably about half an acre. Um, in addition to that, space for a large greenhouse, um. Storage for tools, a shed, and office space, which ideally. Storage for tools, a shed, and office space, which ideally would be next to. The acreage, but not necessarily. We currently store, you know, we have the acreage now and the big greenhouse. And we run the office operations out of the house that has been sold. Um, we have to vacate at the end of this year by December thirty first. And we've made plans for that transition, we just don't have anywhere to go. Um, what we grow out on site are things that are. On the brink of extinction, like, a lot of the seeds we have, we are the only people that have them. And seeds are, depending on the variety, the seeds have to be grown out between every three years and ten years. Um, and if they don't get grown out, then they're at risk of going extinct. And we've been able to, through Dr. Weaver's knowledge and techniques. Been able to bring back some of those seeds from extinction that were thought to be lost, he's. He's got some kind of magic sauce that, he, he's amazing. So that's what we're looking for, we've been exploring lots of different locations, but. You know, our, since nineteen seventy-nine, we've been in East Town, and our volunteer base is. In East Town and surrounding townships, and, you know, we're at the farmer's market, we're in the schools, we're at the library. Um, and we wanna remain here in this community if at all possible. So, we're asking, how can we make that happen? Is there any school land, is there any township land, um? Private land, you know, that is not being used, that they wouldn't mind having a quarter.
Have you reached out to Jenkins over here, I mean, I know it's true.
We have, we have reached out to Jenkins.
What Ted Lussering?
Pardon?
Ted Lussering.
Um, I'm not sure.
Okay, we should talk about that. He has a land, I don't know if he's willing to use it.
Yeah, I don't, don't know him.
There's a couple properties in the township that have plenty of land, but I think his desire is there.
Right, right.
Yeah. Now, if, if you write by what is there now, that is not indicative of what we envision. It's a bit rundown, um, there hasn't any money to maintain the property properly. Uh, we do have some funds set aside for moving. Uh, we raise money through the seed sales, uh, we give presentations, the libraries give us a stipend for presenting. We do have expenses, but, you know. We're, we're not a huge operation, but I think we are a vital operation for what we do. And the agricultural history in this community is pretty much invisible anymore with, with. You know, development and whatnot, and it's nice, you know, I, I would envision the kids having field trips there, we would show them how to plant things. Uh, we did a big planting event at the library, at East Town Library. And the kids just loved it, they learned how to plant seeds and. What to do and how to care for them and all kinds of stuff like that. And, you know, I think we wanna raise a generation of kids who know how to grow things. It, you know, not that, you know, it grew on a shelf at Wegmans or, you know, how did it get here? And I think that's important for the community. I had a, I have had some conversations after this came up. Um, and I was waiting for, like, some kind of specs, like, how many square feet do they need? I know that the land that they need has to be. Sun, there has to be sun, southern exposure maybe, and I talked to. I did talk to Tom Teskani, who thinks that there's space on. Over here, right here, at the bottom of the hill, on this property. But I don't know about the rest of it, but that, you know, I don't know what's upstairs at Hilltop, I don't know. I don't know those things, but, and I don't know how many square feet they need, but I have had a couple conversations. Who seem positive, who are positive. One acre total for growing greenhouse, um, and office. Maybe a trailer of some sort for an office and tool storage. So it's not a lot of land in the scheme of things, and it would keep this heritage collection local.
No, I appreciate that, I mean, I'd love to support it, you know, I'm just practically speaking, I don't know that we have a lot of township land. Um, but we'd be happy to try to help facilitate that. What was, is there a plan to try to move this along, Michael, or is?
Um, well, I thought the first thing will be, does the board support it? Be the, the first question, and if so, you know, what I am was saying, one theory would be. Built up house, space, for space and the, the area, flat area next to it for. The growing area, but that's, again, not the only possibility, there are other places in the township that could potentially do it. But do we know, you know, do the private, they're mostly private owners, do they, somebody would have to approach them and ask. There you go. You don't need the supporter, sure.
Were there specifications of what the land can be used for? Here?
This land, yes, yeah.
And would it include something like that? I'm not sure without looking at the detail, but it's generally for open space and recreation purposes. Would that include an unprofitable organization to, you know, proportion of it? I think there, there might be ways to do that through. About giving up land, for instance, a license or.
We could also check with the family, we would wanna buy, if the family was against it, we wouldn't wanna do it. And the only thing I was thinking was, if we could do this, I don't know if it would work, it would be good to a community garden next to it. That, you know, people could work from, and then we'd have our community garden, I assume that's okay, you, you.
The problem with growing in a community garden, a lot of our things have to be isolated to produce pure seed.
Right, right.
So we can't have a community garden too close because we don't want the tomatoes to fraternize and make a whole new difference.
Right, right, right. So I thought about talking to the CEO of Tureen, because he loves plants.
I didn't know that.
Since he has some significant funds. It might be interesting to see whether he was interested in venturing into such a project.
I know some carries that Trudifer Township would be interested, I know Wilson Park, I love that park, it is huge. There's a lot of land there, and there's quite a few outbuildings as well, it's another possibility.
Yeah, the, um, the house is in East Town, but some of the land is in Trudifer.
Right.
So we kinda have our foot in both, um, and we have been working also with the Trudifer Starville Commission over there. To see what we can do in Trudifer.
All right, well, I mean, I guess we support, support what you're endeavoring to do and. I guess, try to lend any support that we can, if we can.
Appreciate that.
Uh, moving on to.
Oh, I, sorry, I don't have a whole lot more to add. As a public, member of the public, not an EAC representative, but. I've had the pleasure of volunteering there, it's a really worthwhile organization, I hope we can help them find a home in East Town. I do think there is an opportunity to increase visibility about Roughwood and this cause. Um, perhaps that's how we can be supportive as a, you know, township. Uh, and, you know, maybe that will lead to a resident coming forward and offering a parcel of land, or perhaps like a house of worship. Um, there is, you know, school district land, and as I'm sure some of you know, there is a new. Set of, uh, learning requirements coming down from the state, starting in September, that are requiring a lot more environmental education. And Beaumont is doubling the size of its garden, Devon is putting in a garden, as far as I know. The middle schools, both of them are putting in gardens, so there is like. There is a movement here, and I think we can capitalize on that and hopefully, you know, propel this forward in some way.
What if we could get funding, like, if there's some.
There's a ton of grant money out there. I was looking at them last week, but.
Okay, so that's good to know.
That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, Karen, that was actually a suggestion, I was gonna say, is talk to the school district. They own a lot of land.
They do, um. I'm not sure. If Cynthia, who is the main person, who's tasked with looking for land, if she's actually approached the school district specifically.
It would be, it would be.
But that would be a perfect synergy with.
It would, especially if there was a way that the district could benefit from having you there, like, if it was like. A sponsor, like, I think she's alluded to that, like, some kind of partnership where the kids would be able to, you'd be able to do something with the children.
Yeah, that's something that we have proposed, um, you know, we love doing stuff with kids, and they seem to love us too.
Yeah, it doesn't hurt to, to purchase.
Any other public comments? Ring nine, thank you, good luck, and hopefully we can win pretty.
We appreciate the support and the increase in visibility, just bringing it up at the meeting is very helpful.
Thank you. Thank you, Michael. Um, next up is liaison and work group reports. First up is the Verwin Debt and Business Association.
So this is something we have to prove, we didn't approve it yet, is this, if we would wanna add this as a. A liaison position, I said I'd be happy to do it, and I was approached by Tracy King, who is the president of. The Verwin Business Association, I brought it to Don's attention as well. That's just something that I think would be really important to help. With our relationship with business communities, also know what's going on at their meetings. I did attend one of their meetings, I was really interested in it, an AI meeting. Uh, and a lot of the business owners were there and everything, I think something that could be beneficial for the township to, with our communication goal.
Did we used to have one, or was it just heavy by default?
I don't know.
A lot of our liaisons typically assigned to actual ABCs, like, it's not a, I, I'm not. Say I shouldn't do it, I just.
No, I think, I think usually the others, yes, the, um, the Neighborhood Watch. Was it, is an example where it's been on your list, but we're always careful to say. Tell the world it's not a governmental agency and, you know, they're on your own, we may interact so that they can help the police. Sort of a similar idea, so I think some of it is philosophical. If you were to create a liaison, I, I think it should be an action item. At a meeting to add to the roster for.
Um, can we keep it informal, I mean. As a, I mean, there's nothing stopping us from just central someone reporting back.
Right, if, if a supervisor is welcome at those meetings, I think you can do it that informally too. Sort of have the eyes and ears of the business community and get an informal report from time to time on what, what you're hearing.
Sure, yeah, I mean.
And I think you did this in the last meeting, so, uh, it was in the consent agenda.
Wasn't it, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm just, Michael. So, to Michael and the, uh, Michael has, he created a public works work group. And made Michael the liaison, and you appointed Sean to be the liaison to the Verwin District.
Is that agenda, I'm sorry?
And I, I did check.
Yeah.
So, uh, to me, that's established.
So let it be written, so let it be done.
That's fine, um, I will let Tracy know and then, um, get the meeting scheduled. Okay, ECA met on May twelfth. Um, the first thing was an update on the banks, the, the bank accounts, we've gone down from seventeen to twelve, and all savings accounts are closed. And, um, they're gonna monitor the, uh, budget rate to make sure that, um. But when, if the rate goes up, we, we get the same rate. If it goes down, I'm sure the bank will, they take care of that for us. And they reported updates on the projects, the bank's account simplification, budget simplification. Fund balance policy, investment policy. Um, accounting assistance, transparency, that's the one that I've been working on in terms of, um. Getting our budget out on the, the website, that's still moving forward, and capital planning. I've got a bunch of details, but I'll leave it at that.
Uh, next up is EMA.
I was not able to attend the meeting last week, unfortunately, but I know they talked about the annual report and the, uh, the VFASA, which came up earlier.
Um, EAC, I was not able to attend the meeting. Play, um. Uh, next up is the finance work group.
April twenty-third was the last meeting, I have the record on.
We have one in May, so we just updated you on, uh, year-to-year stuff. Sort of an elaboration of the, uh, probably the, the line chart was discussing the EIT and.
Right.
Where it's fitting.
Next up is the fire EMS task force.
We met last week.
By contracting, I mean.
Agreement that would create the T E F D.
Very, um. So I make sure we're talking about this, um, next up is the historical commission.
So, the H C had some pretty hefty discussions on the properties, uh. And the big discussion came at the end, um, I, I couldn't stay for the whole thing, but they were discussing one oh seven Lancaster. Um, for quite a while, um. John, how did that finish, was that just kinda discussion on that and there's?
Uh, yeah, so since the builder has not yet submitted a permit, um, I think feedback was. Provided toward, to the builder on the project and, uh, we're at the time, just waiting for permits to be applied for.
Okay.
So, we've nothing binding, implemented conversations.
And then passed that, which I, I believe after that was already additional.
And it just went into their liaison reports, so that was the last item of, um, of their agenda outside of their monthly, uh, updates.
Yeah, yeah, it was, it was just on property, certain properties, things that were.
Library Board of Trustees.
Yeah, I think that was a meeting I attended in Sean's place, um, there is a new community outreach librarian, her name is Rachel. Uh, I spoke about briefly the new East Town Communications Board, Eric. Um, that I think there might be some combined, um, you know, energy there between what we're doing, what they're doing. And kind of help, you know, spur that, so there's probably something there, I just can't quite put my finger on it. Um, but they were kind of excited at the prospect of that. Uh, for the treasures report, they're a little ahead of schedule in terms of collections, which was, uh, uh, positive. Um, they had a speaker series, they had Sue TD from, uh, Trudifer East Town School District. Uh, board member talked about, you know, the library card registration and the elementary school open houses and. Um, you know, ways to get more, uh, participation from elementary school kids in the library and stuff, really good, interesting ideas. Uh, and a lot of things shared between, you know, Sue and, and the school district and, and the library that I think can, you know. Uh, increase participation even more. Um, another thing that was brought up was they're open to discussion with the, uh, the facilities committee. Um, for the Trudifer East Town School District Board. Um, about the adjacent library lot usage, doesn't mean that they wanna sell it and, you know, let us have it or whatever, but I think they're open to an idea. Uh, to see if there's something that we could do together, um, figure something out, it's sort of either redevelopment or extension. I think one of the big things is potentially an expansion to the library, in whatever form that may take, because we're seeing so much demand and usage. Um, and what does that look like, and how can the school district help, and what can we kind of offer to, you know, compensate, so. Um, there's a discussion there, I think we'll, we'll have to kind of see that through for the next several months and years. Balance fund, a little bit down, no big deal, um, the last thing I wanted to bring up was there was concerns with the end of the meeting about. Federal funding and state funding, which is. At risk of being pulled back from funding the, the library because of the federal funding being cut for other programs, and then that had. You know, the funding for the library being needed to use to, to plug the, the loss in federal funding elsewhere. It was about seventy-five K for each of them, so about a hundred and fifty K total that is at risk for next year, so the question is. What does the library do if they're suddenly gonna have a hundred and fifty thousand dollar hole in their budget? Um, is that something that we pick up? Is that something that we figured out a different way to do? Could we cut that from their budget? Um, I would, you know, personally, one of my board members, I would hate to let that decrease from, you know, whatever their budget is now, I think we give them seven hundred something thousand. And then they lose a hundred and fifty thousand, we allow that when they're actually increasing in the usage. And the, you know, book checkout and turnover, that, that type of stuff, so I hate to see this great resource that's being used a lot more and increasing. See that being cut, so that's something we're going to have to evaluate either at the end of the year or early next year, so, that's all I got, sorry.
Okay, um, thank you, Alex, moving on to parks and rec.
Parks and Rec were, they went over their goals for um, capital projects and they continue planning. You know, Fourth of July, planning and stuff like that, the concert series. And go.
Thank you, Susan, uh, moving on to the planning commission.
Planning Commission had a visit from Bowman and um, time committee associates, and they described what they were going to do for us. To um, help us possibly look at Berwyn and, and the Route Thirty area. Uh, it's really exciting to hear about all sorts of, um, what's it called, complete street projects. Where they're talking about possibly doing a, a road, dying it, or all sorts of possibilities that we have through Berwyn, so that was really exciting.
Thank you, um, moving on to the police work group, excuse me.
Wait, no.
Uh, moving on to the public works work group.
Yes, we had our first meeting today.
Oh, that good.
Well, well, we, Ken, our new, our new public works employee, Ken has come in for uh, seven weeks. He's been, he's working with um, Chuck and getting to understand things, getting to know the uh, sewer system. Um, we, we, all right, we bought a new truck this year, it should be ready in July. So that'll dovetail well to him getting his own truck, Chuck having his truck, and they're going on their merry way. So by then, Chuck, the, Ken should be well versed in what needs to be done. Um, the rest of it was mainly organization stuff, getting how this group is going to work, what we're going to do, what we're going to cover.
Very good, thank you, um. So that's, that's been uh, one of our lives and work with reports, next up is public comment, do you have any public comment? Maybe, is Kara's in raise from four, or is this?
Hi all, sorry. Um, I, I was asked by a fellow EAC member to ask the question about. Um, the public works report mentions that PRP project number three is still um, moving forward. With cooperation from the DEP, and I was asked to ask if tree removal at Hilltop Park is being considered in that project.
Yeah, the project isn't uh, isn't to the point where it would identify that. And that's a key element, or you are a key policy choice for you all to make. And I have it on my list to talk to you in executive session about it, because it's related to the permit. And I think you need some advice from me. So nothing, nothing's brewing, there's no plan, there's a, there's a general area. And the predecessor projects have involved a sizable amount of tree removal.
Okay, thank you.
Any other public comment, yes?
Um, Heather Hill, and I'm here to just find out some more information about your trash recycling, the new contract. Um, so the transition, I know like when we went from waste management to Republics, there was. Really not that much communication to the community, um, so we got the new bins uh, out, they came and took the old bins and everything. But there was no, like, uh, this is what's accepted, this is not Red Street uh, accepted. It would be nice if there was some communication on the bins itself that communicated exactly what is to put in the bins. So I just wanted to get some information or how I can get that information, and maybe we can work with them to be a little more communicative of what's expected.
Sure, I think that's something going, it's done pretty well.
Yeah, that's, yeah, so uh, nothing's changed in what's allowable, not allowable, uh. We have two tasks that come from the vote tonight, one is a, an implementation plan with Whitetail where we schedules and. Which truck went and who has to deliver what to whom, and then the second item is a communications plan. To try to do better, to try to do the things that you've just identified. So my gut tells me Heather is call, call Susan and let her know the kind of things that, or call me or email me, let us know. So we haven't developed a plan, we've committed to developing one to try to address the things that you want addressed. That's all I got at the moment.
And Susan, maybe that's something we can uh, use the communications board.
Yeah.
Or bigger, the best way to communicate.
So all part of it, uh, so we're going to try to do, try to do, there's, like, there's an element of recognition to what you just said. So there's a, uh, an attempt on our part to do better.
Can I add one more thing? So in a different township, they had identified, yeah, um, customers who were not following. The protocol, what was accepted or not, so. Uh, the recycler would just take whatever and they would deal with it, but this township would actually put a sticker on their bin to identify like. Okay, we did not take your bin today because of X, Y, and Z. Um, and therefore then you could either, um. Give them a fee, or it, you know, they already received the fact that it wasn't picked up. Um, but they need to, like, the customer needs to identify that the recycler didn't pick it up, the trash people put, picked it up. Like, there has to be some sort of identification, like, this is what happened. Um, because at the end of the day, they come home, their bins are all empty, and they don't know any better, uh, who picked up or if. They were faulty in what they were doing, that doesn't.
Okay, yeah, makes sense, and we just have to get the answers, we, we would expect it to be patently unlawful for them to do that. So we would just have to remind them, yeah, we had, we just have to remind them that they're not allowed to do that. I wouldn't expect them to do that, but we have to make sure they don't, so we've had conversations like that, we've uh. And I, I'm not aware that that was happening with Republic. And mostly it came to us by the calls we would get saying, my recycling is out, why did they not take it? And then there was a little bit of backing.
It's all automated, nobody's going to see what's in your recycling container that goes into the.
Yeah.
And, and nobody's going to know.
So we'll have to have that kind of conversation.
I think it's about education, letting people know that what needs to go into recycling, what doesn't.
And that was brought up at the, the presentation that we had before, was that there was going to be an education community about what is. For like, what should be in there, what shouldn't be in there.
Well, Whitetail claims that's one of their strong suits is communication and education, so that's what we're hoping to pan with them, so.
Sorry, wait, um, waste management, they had a beautiful flyer. Um, colored pictures, everything, people don't read it, people think, uh, my interpretation, they already know what they're doing. So they don't need to look at any flyers or anything, and they thought Waste Management did such a beautiful job. In person, they sent it out to all the, everybody got it in their mailboxes, it's on your website, it's, it's, the information's out there. People aren't looking now, or. I don't, they're, they're, they're not, I don't know.
They're not following.
And they're not following through, I mean, you just walk down the street, you can see bags, their recycling is all put in plastic bags. I mean, that's number one screaming, like, it's not done properly at the get-go. So anyway, it's just, um, how to, how do we educate or make people more accountable? Um, it, it's not just sending them the flyers, they're not looking at them, I, I don't know, I just, just to put it out there.
Thank you, any other public comment?
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Um, I noticed yesterday a pink, uh, like the flags from. Uh, pink plastic thing from, anyway, nailed into one of my trees. And I was walking my dog and noticed it, these things on other trees, and. I need to know about this, because I have significant landscaping around that tree. I have significant tree issues, because I'm losing other trees that are not healthy, and this one is healthy. So I need to like, what do I do, who do I talk to?
I guess you start with the police, if somebody comes onto your property and tags your trees, I would.
Well, they, they could. They could have tagged it from the street.
Yeah, if it's pink, sometimes it, um, it's a surveyor's mark.
Well, it looked like that kind of tape that they, the flag that they put out, but.
Joe, Joe's pretty correct in these things, so why don't you just call Joe and he'll start to volunteer.
You're on leopard, correct? Yeah, I did hear about that today.
We'll, we'll figure it out, and then we'll uh, we can interface with some of the utility companies and see if there's anything that they're doing. So is all activity in the right of way? All activity in the right of way?
Yeah.
Okay, so Joe's the starting point, uh, he's, he can assess it and he can make. Communication with utility companies, and we can usually get to the bottom of that.
Good, any other public comment? Uh, moving on to announcements, we checked the uh. Packet that's attached to this agenda, I will have all these townships coming, meetings and events. Um, also, after this meeting, the board of supervisors will be holding executive session. Um, to discuss.
Then there's a personnel and litigation.
Yes, uh, discuss matters of personnel litigation, to have a motion to adjourn, so, second, any term?
We're going to set plans. We'll reach out to people, catch them, or just all of us.
Uh, some plans.